He said, "Do you believe I can take anybody across?" And they said, "Yes, we believe it." He said, "Well then, come let me take you across." And they was like, "Okay, we believe or we don't believe at the same time." So if we believe that, I want to see some evidence. Anybody, you can't do it if you're a teacher already. Somebody come and help me co-teach this lesson. We're gonna support you. See, what you shaking your head for? We're gonna support you and everything's gonna be alright. Don't be scared. I mean, what they gonna do, stone you? If they try to stone you, I'm gonna push, you know, one of these guys in the way and I'm not gonna let them do it. Come on Johnny. Come on Johnny. Johnny was my best friend the first time I was here. The friendship is over. Come on Johnny. What do y'all think's gonna happen? We're gonna tar and feather you if you get something wrong? I'm gonna help you. I'm gonna be right here. I have lots of things written in my book. Come on. Oh wow. Nobody, come on man. You ain't gonna be scared? Everything cool. Thank you. Some courage. Alrighty. Oh really? Alrighty. Okay, so we're gonna go back and review first of all. If everybody will change, go back to... Thank you for being brave. Ooh Johnny, ooh. But anyway, go back to page thirty-six and look at our homework. Page thirty-six. The first study class we had, how many people filled it out? Please don't sell tales in church. If you didn't fill it out, it's okay. It's okay. Alright, so the first thing, this young man, his name is David, right? And let me point out that I met David while we were over there filling bags. And in case everybody doesn't know, you know, we feed people, this church feeds people every Tuesday at 4:00 PM, right? And David started coming over to fill bags, so that's how I got to know David. And that's that togetherness. You come join a ministry, people get to know you. And I always saw him around too. I didn't know his name. And that little dude wouldn't talk to me. He act like I was the invisible woman every time I said something to him. I don't know what's up with that. So would you please read this paragraph right here?
How does group work applies to spiritual life? What tense tension and are satisfied?
Sacrifice?
Sacrifice comes with unity with other believers in going, ongoing meaningful ways.
Okay, so you know, that's basically saying, how does, how does getting together and doing things together unify us? In group activities, how many people believe that group activities unify us? What do you think about it? How does group activities unify us?
How does it unify us?
Yes, like if we work together, like when we fill the bags.
Okay.
Who are some of the people you've gotten to know since you've been here?
Ooh, I can tell you something girl. Um... Excuse me. I never, you know, um...
We're here to support you. That's what we're talking about. It's unity and everything.
Uh, unity is, um, it's got a lot to do with love. And you will know love because the Bible said that you will know the fruit by the fruit that it bears. And everybody cannot bear fruit. You can be in the church for years, um, but everybody can't bear fruit.
They bear fruit and know bear, they're feeling them bad?
Oh yes, yes.
We put fruit in them bad.
Well, what I mean is that by unity and love is, is a, is a, is a spiritual within thing. And everybody can open up their mouth and say, "I love you." But the heart God knows. The heart God knows. And this is the reason why I can say that. Because God put me in certain positions. That a lot of people would not be aware of the test that I have to bear. About loving God's people.
So you're saying it's gonna take a whole lot of love for unity to happen?
No, no, I'm not gonna say that it's gonna take a lot of unity.
A lot of love, yeah.
It's personal.
Well, amen.
Because God said that he is love. And when you can personally love God, you can love another human being.
Let me ask you this, um, do you have any irritating family members? Y'all got irritating, uh, family members? Well, you have to love them anyway, right? I had a family member, I signed some, I was, I don't, I wasn't young. I don't know what was wrong with me. I was in my thirties already. I signed some paperwork for them to get a vehicle. Yes, I heard some groaning, uh, yeah. And they stopped paying. It's the reason why people have bad credit, right? And then I went through seven years with that vehicle and I would go home and they would just act like nothing happened. But so you gotta decide, are you gonna love them or not? They ain't getting no more money. They called me one time and said, "I got to go to the doctor. I might have cancer." And I said, "Oh, well, you knew you had to go to the doctor. God bless you." Click. But anyway, I still love it. I ain't getting no more money, but I love them. And I'm not gonna be angry with them and I'm not gonna be mad at them. It might not be easy. It's like, and we, we get into these ministries, we get to know. I've gotten to know Ms. Shirley Crea, Ms. Shirley Collins, Ms. Mabel, because we all work together and sharing this care. And you know, we give out the canned food to people. And we know that we're gonna start working and Ms. Collins gonna leave that cane somewhere and she gonna stop and say, "Where is my cane?" And everybody gonna have to search for the cane and everything, but she's so nice all the time. We know that Shirley Crea is a hardworking person. These things can only happen if we get to know each other. Now, we don't know each other very well, but I assume that if we keep serving together and everything, I'm gonna get to know you, you're gonna get to know me. And that's how we start coming together. As a matter of fact, let's look at what it says on the bottom of page thirty-six. It says, "Even though people can be disappointing, frustrating, and irritating at times, community is worth fighting for." Scripture makes it clear, "In Christ we are joined together. We are family." So, so if someone is, is making you mad and getting on your nerves at church, do you, where do you find that patience to forgive them and deal with them?
Um, just say it again?
Where do you find the patience? And we know if somebody makes you...
You have to find patience. But see, it's not, but see, this is something that I had to learn within myself. That it's not an overnight situation that a person have to deal with those type of in-people things that people have in people. I have, I used to have inner people. Until I had to, it got to the point that they had to put me on medication. But God took me up off of it.
Praise the Lord.
But, but what I'm saying is, is that we all have interpersonal. But the thing about it is that the Bible says that when you put on the whole armor of God, you can be able to deal with those type of demons and he'll give you the eagle of an eye of an eagle. To be able to see those type of spirits coming your way.
Praise the Lord. Now, everybody give Brother David a hand. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, don't forget, don't forget your book.
Okay, thank you.
Now, on page thirty-seven, at the bottom, the last paragraph on page thirty-seven, it says, it says, "Underline the part in the story on Mark two and two." And this is where the four men let their buddy down to be healed by Jesus. For a that might indicate the crowd was devoted to Jesus and to one another. So is there anything, it's right above it, is there anything there that says they were devoted to Jesus that looks like they were devoted to each other? And it says, the verse says, "So many people gathered together that there was, so many people gathered together that there was no more room, not even in the doorway." "He was speaking the word to them." They were not able to bring him to Jesus because of the crowd, Mark two and two. So what there indicates that they may have been, um, gathering together? Probably because it says they gathered together. So many people gathered together. Okay, so that's the easy one. I gave y'all that answer, so, but we're gonna answer the second answer, okay? Second question, circle the part of the story that indicates that the large crowd represented something other than true devotion to Jesus. What says, what words say that they weren't really interested in what Jesus was interested in? What, who said that? Say it loud, please, Auntie. Auntie Irma? Okay, so somebody is paralyzed. The guy is paralyzed and they're trying to get in the church and they're like, "Can you move out the way so we can get up there?" And the people wouldn't move. How insensitive, how awful would that be that the people would not move a step aside and let them bring the guy to Jesus? Everybody knew that Jesus was famous for healing people, right? So it's like, we trying to listen to the sermon, "Get that paralyzed man out of here." It's like, what? He's paralyzed. So they didn't have enough compassion in their hearts to try and help this guy. And so we might say, "We're exempt because we don't have any paralyzed people coming to our church." And if there was a paralyzed person, I would move aside and let the paralyzed people in. Yes, but how many times has someone rubbed you the wrong way and make you upset? Can you find the grace needed to say, "I'm not going off on them. I'm not gonna be mad at them forever." Uh, you're, because we say, "They're wrong. They're wrong." Well, if they're wrong and you're right, then you should have the strength to forgive them. You should have the strength to say something kind to whatever the foolishness they just said. You don't have to start working your neck and turn to, "It's a shenanee and I'm gonna tell them." They say, "Why? I'm gonna give them a piece of my mind." You keep handing out pieces of your mind, you ain't gonna have much left. It's like, so we're the ones, if we're the strong ones, we're the ones who can forgive. Now, we're not talking about, you know, just complete foolishness, because there were times when Jesus Christ was so loving and caring. And there was times when Jesus Christ just went around and went off on folks. Because he taught, his own brothers came to him and said, um, they knew that the Jews were looking for him to kill him. They said, "Why are you hiding around here? Why don't you go up to the festival?" They were telling Jesus his own brothers, "Why don't you go up and get killed?" Jesus Christ turned around and said, "My time is not yet. Your time is any time." It's like, what you doing don't matter. I got, he was, he would go off on people, but he would be nice. And we, that's what we need to decide when to tell people to stop and when to just be compassionate. How do we know when to do it? How can you know? Amen. I do too. I know he, I know he will too. And it's, it's gonna require the Holy Spirit. I was, I was in trouble one time and, um, why was it in trouble? I had one soldier that had a little bit of rank over the other soldier and decided he was just gonna skull drag her. That means make her do so much exercise, you know, till she throw up and whatever. And this joker one worked the salt you put in bread. He talking about he gonna skull drag somebody. Ain't nobody skull drag you. But, but he was my boss's pet. He was my boss's favorite. And you know, like, he didn't have to do what we had to do. And so, and, and when she came to me and said, well, he said, he told me to go get on my PT clothes, because my exercise clothes, he's gonna do this and that to me. And I prayed, I said, "God, help me, because I'm gonna go over here and talk to this man, the boss, because I know he's gonna get him involved." And I'm about to lose my job today. I said, "Lord, I know I'm gonna lose my job because I can't put up with this mess anymore." And so I had it over there and I prayed the whole time over there. And I go in there, I said, "Sir, I need to speak to you in private." We get in private and I say, "Look, your soldier," I didn't say your favorite, "your soldier is saying he's gonna do this and I am not going to let that happen." I looked him straight in the eye. And he said, "Okay." What in the body snatchers is going on? He's the same man. They said, and he agreed with me and went over there and stopped the guy. And that was, that was it. I promise you, I thought I was gonna lose my job. I said, "I'm gonna lose my job today because this is not going to happen." They gonna have to call the MPs to come get me because I'm not gonna stand here. I'm the, the, you know, staff sergeant in charge. I'm not letting one soldier abuse another soldier. I was like, I guess I'd be going home to Fort Living Room, because this not gonna happen today. But, um, the guy agreed with me. He has never agreed with me before. He has never agreed with me since. But anyway, that day, because when you pray, the Holy Spirit can make some things happen. So we need to remember, things are happening. People are not doing what they're supposed to do. Before you decide what to do, remember to pray, God can change hearts. He can change minds. Now, you can focus on how hurt you are. You can focus on how angry you are, which will get you nothing but an argument and a problem. Or you can pray and say, "Lords, will you please fix this situation? This person has disrespected me. Would you please help?" Why don't you give God a chance to be God before we start to try to be God? Because we're not gonna be good at being God. We're not good at being us. So let's look at the, the next to last paragraph on page thirty-nine. It begins with, "Like the crowd." Like the crowd blocking the door, we can get so caught up in what we want, that we ignore the needs of other people. Or like the religious leaders, we can get so caught up in what's familiar, that we judge everyone else with cynicism. Both of those attitudes surface out of fear that if we let people in, we're going to lose our place, position, or preferences. We need to make room in our hearts because crowd and, and what's that, clicks? Why, that must be French or something. Why would you spell click like that? But anyway, click mentalities block people from seeing and knowing Jesus. So if we let our emotions, your emotions will land you in a ditch somewhere. You cannot, you have to search for the truth. You're gonna have emotions because we're human. But while having your emotions, you gotta start speaking some truth. If you don't know the word of God, you won't have any truth to help you. You gonna cut somebody out yet again and then apologize to God later yet again. So if you turn over to page forty, we see, we're doing okay on time. Now, I don't know if you can find it in the paragraph. It's the, the last two sentences in the paragraph at the top of page forty. It says, "When we are inwardly focused, we become complacent about bringing people to Jesus and making disciples." When we allow our hearts to become close off to God and his people, we become apathetic, that means like sluggish, to the spiritual needs of others and miss gospel realities God wants us to see. So when we become concerned about ourselves and just ourselves, you know, me, mine, and me, my four, no more. Is that how that goes? That's not important. So anyway, if you only care about you and your feelings and what happens to you, then you won't get it. Sometimes, especially if you know a person is nice, but today they're acting crazy, it would be helpful instead of saying, "I can't believe he talked to me like that to say, I wonder what's wrong with him." Maybe they wanna talk, "Are you okay?" Has anybody ever asked you, "Are you okay?" Because sometimes you're, you're act a certain way and they go, "Hey, are you okay?" They get to talk about it and you find out something crazy is going on. Now, there's some people, they're crazy all the time. Okay, well then we just have to keep them in prayer. And you have to say, "Lord, show me how to deal with this person." Because every time they walk up, they got something crazy to say. And I don't wanna get crazy. They acting like, they clowning like the circus is around the corner, because I could be a bigger clown than them. But then you have to start praying there. You know this person is always doing something they had no business doing, right? Well then pray, Lord, say, "I'm going to church today. They're probably gonna be there. Show me how to deal with this person." Either way it goes, it's something that God, the Holy Spirit should be helping with. Okay. Turn to page forty-two. The second paragraph down says, "But notice that this passage isn't about the faith of the paralytic." Isn't that something? Have we ever considered that? This is not about the faith of the paralytic. What's going on? Oh, you didn't have anything? You didn't?
I was just agreeing with you.
Okay, well, that's free. Alright. "When Jesus looked up, he saw something remarkable, four human beings who all believed Jesus could perform miracles." And the Bible says, "Because of their faith, the man experienced a total overhaul of his soul and body." He not only picked up his mat, he left behind his shame and his guilt. Isn't that something? Jesus Christ healed this man because of the faith of other people. And again, something we need to bring together, togetherness. we need to bring together, uh, togetherness. Can't we have faith with people when they're having trouble having faith? Can we do it? He said, they're down, they've had a death in the family, they're having a sickness, they might be having trouble having faith. They're not, they're going to the left a little, doing things they're not supposed to do. Can we start praying for them and say, hey, we need to pray for? I'm not talking about gossip either, you know, just gossip is like, ooh, let's talk, you know, she having all kind of trouble, they say her husband. He said, please don't do that. I knew this lady that said, when they start gossiping to her, she started speaking in tongues, it's like, okay, well they won't come to you no more. She said, no. That'll fix it right there. So anyway, it's like, people are gonna have, every human being, I don't care if you're so holy till your feet don't quite touch the ground, every human being is going to have trouble where you, you get into some addictions, or you, you start having a bad attitude, or they said, I don't like them, they complain too much. That's probably because they're hurting. Have you considered that? They're hurting, they don't know what to do, so they're complaining. Can we be that stronger force, so that, that when we fall, we have some other people be that stronger force to us? I was, when I was Sunday School Superintendent, it sounded like years ago, right? A few months ago, I was having a really horrible time with menopause. I mean, homegirl was driving me crazy, and I was having emotions all over the place. I would get to, uh, Wednesday night, teachers meeting, going, I don't, you know, I know why he's coming, the teachers meeting, and everything's horrible, and I'm praying, I'm like, Lord, what is wrong with me? I know that there's something, I know that this is not me, I don't do this, I know there's something wrong, would you please help me? And I was, ended up, and so, I ended up going to see a doctor, and they gave me medication, and now I'm very medicated, and everything is cool, right? But the point is, the guys in, uh, in teachers meeting were not mean to me, and they didn't say stuff, why don't you get yourself together, and, and brother Brett was always looking out for me, and so, you guys must have wondered sometime, what's wrong with her? You know, brother Fryson, they were always nice to me, until I could get through, I didn't know what was wrong with me. I didn't know that would even be the cause. I was talking to one, I knew something's wrong with me, so I got a counselor, I talked to the counselor every mon- Monday, and she said, I think you need to go and talk to somebody about menopause, because I think there's something more wrong with you. And I was like, so she's the one who sent me to get help? I didn't know what was wrong. I would say, I know I'm blessed, life is going great, because life has been in the toilets, let's not even get into that, life has been bad, she said, life is good. Why am I upset all the time? You know, I drop a pin, I'm like, I, I dropped my pin. It's like, what, what is wrong with me? And I thank you guys, all you guys who were teachers meeting, who held me up, and, and still let me be superintendent, even though I clearly had something wrong with me. That's what we're gonna have to do for each other. When things are not going well, and, please don't make the mistake, our pastor is a human being, is he not? I, I love it when I hear somebody start praying for the pastor, because you can't complain about what the pastor did if you never prayed for them, right? Yeah, so it's like, people watch folks fall, then they got something to say, were you praying? Were you praying for them? We can't let that happen, please, let's never stop praying for our pastor, because the devils, they watch us, they know what we like and where to get us, right? And we just gotta keep that prayer coming. Alright, so we got, we're gonna have to go ahead and end the review right here. Thank you for helping me do the review, and now we're gonna watch the video. There's waving up there, does that mean there's not gonna be a video? Oh, you mean come up there? I don't know sign language, I just don't. Oh, it's not playing. Alrighty, then in that case, turn to page 50. We'll just talk about it. So we can't answer the first question, what stood out to you personally in Ben's teaching? Because we don't, we didn't get Ben's teaching. Okay, but anyway. It says, it wants us to read Acts 2:46 to 47. So, Acts 2:46 to 47. Alrighty.
Be like the hypocrites, and when we look up that word, it was a word for a actor in a play, in theater. In those days, they would wear masks to play a certain part, that was part of the costume. And Jesus says, don't ever think that you're gonna win in life by wearing a mask. Don't be like people who wear masks. What's beautiful about connection with other people is that when you find a group to which you can take off the mask, you find the ability to be the real you. That's what sincerity is. It's no longer a desire to impress, or to put my best foot forward, or to present the social media version of me, you get the real me. And so, in Christian community, the question is readily asked, is the real Ben Mandrell coming today? And it's my job to bring the real, authentic version of myself to a group. This is why I believe so much in, um, vulnerable leadership. As the person leading a group, or as the person who's facilitating a group, is willing to take off the mask, it's like other people are waiting to take theirs off too. They just need somebody to go first, to give them permission to not be okay, to not have it all together, to not have a Bible verse that makes them feel comfort, when they really just feel pain. And when we walk through that level of sincerity together, there is a strength that comes that Jesus called us to, of being united. Today I want to underscore the importance of sincerity in small groups. Acts 2:46 says this, it says that every day they devoted themselves to meeting together in the temple, and they broke bread from house to house, but here's the part I want you to see, they ate their food with joyful and sincere hearts. That word sincere, there's so much meaning packed in there. To be sincere means to not be impressive. There's always a temptation when people get together to try to be impressive. Uh, I would confess that, um, I hope that those who use this study walk away and say, amen, Ben Mandrell was a really impressive teacher, or the video sessions were so impressive in his delivery. Every time that we're, uh, performing in any way, we want to be impressive, that's the problem with performance, there's always a temptation to try to impress. And yet, in the passage of Scripture we're gonna study today, this is really the hardest study, in my opinion. It's the Apostle Paul, who we think now is the most impressive Christian ever to live, admitting that, as people experienced him back in the New Testament era, they were not impressed. So, one of the things we know is that Paul constantly said that he did not come to people with power and eloquence. He was not a great speaker. It's hard for us to imagine that the Apostle Paul is not a great speaker, but in the early church, there was this great debate on who was the better speaker, was it Apollos or was it Paul? And the large majority seemed to suggest that they'd rather hear Apollos. Uh, Paul in one place is so dreadful in his speaking, that a young man falls asleep out the window and crashes onto the ground, to which he has to be resurrected. This is not the best way for people to respond to your speaking. Even in other places, uh, I have this note here that I wanted to share with you, uh, in extra biblical places, there are comments about Paul and his appearance. And someone saw Paul, and they wrote down what they thought about Paul, this is outside the Bible, so take it with a grain of salt, but it's still helpful. And he saw Paul coming, a man of small stature, with a bald head and crooked legs, in a good state of body, with eyebrows meeting and nose somewhat hooked, full of friendliness. What a mixed bag of adjectives that is. Uh, he was a really friendly guy with bowed legs and a unibrow. Uh, he was not the person that you would walk up and be like, he's probably on the cover of CrossFit magazines. So we get the sense, the Apostle Paul was not impressive physically, and he was not impressive as a speaker. And yet, the thing that we noticed from Paul's ministry was his weakness. And so today, in 2 Corinthians chapter 12, I absolutely love the way that Paul breaks down the power of pain in his life, particularly about this thorn that showed up in his life that he did not, did not anticipate, that made him a better believer, a better brother in Christ, a better minister, because he had walked through pain. And I want to tell you a story. I was with a church recently, uh, they were looking for a pastor, and they wanted to know my opinions about who they might seek after as a pastor. And so I said, well, what are you looking for? And the chair of the group said, we are really looking for a pastor who has suffered. I have never heard that before, and I've met with a lot of different search teams looking for pastors. I, I've heard, we're looking for a great communicator, we're looking for somebody that's a great administrator, who is a relational, uh, prayer warrior, a, a lot of things could have been said. I've never heard a church say, we really want someone who knows pain, and can sympathize with those who have it. Paul says in this passage that three times he begged God to take the pain in his life away. What kind of pain was it? We'll get into the study. I think it was a very pronounced physical pain, because he says it was a thorn in his flesh. It was something that was persistently robbing him of the joy of being in ministry. And yet, God said very clearly, I'm not taking this away, because a Paul with pain is more effective in ministry than a Paul without pain. And so Paul began to accept the fact that, in order to be a great dispenser of grace, he needs to receive grace, he needs to receive the help from God and from other people, that only pain could introduce into his life. And what I love about the beauty of the local church is that, and when you get into a mixed setting with people, and it happened even today with the group I was with, there are always people who are experiencing the highs of life, as others are experiencing the lows. And the Lord has a way of working it out, so that those who are strong can help those who are weak, and next week, it may be completely opposite. And so, when we only rely on our own strength, when we walk through pain, we truly have no reinforcements. We have no one to lean on, other than our own selves. So I love the idea that it's in our weakness that we are most strong, because then we're aware of our need for other people, and our need for God, and our need for prayer. And so, there is this expectation sometimes in Christianity, that as we graduate to levels of maturity, that we can expect pain to go away, rather than to amplify, and yet, the New Testament says, it is through many trials and tribulations that we enter the kingdom of God. So what does this mean for sincerity? Paul came to the place where he would sincerely say to people, I desperately need your prayers, I don't know that I have the strength to continue, I have all of these things that are afflicting me, I don't know if I have the physical strength, I don't know that I'll be bold enough in my moment of proclamation, will you please pray for me? Everywhere he went, he was in dependence of people's prayers, and he was honest about his need for them. And so, the, the temptation for pride in ministry, or in life in general, comes with success. So the more success you have, the more that people stoke your ego, or, uh, help you see all of the gifts that you bring to the table, the more this happens, the less likely you are to live in gospel dependence. And the Apostle Paul says that God said this very clearly to him, that my grace is sufficient for you, and my power is perfected in weakness. And so I don't know who you think you are, you might think that you're a really strong person, and you bring strength to the group, but what I have observed is what really brings people together in community, is when they are unashamedly weak. When they talk about the thorns in their flesh, when they talk about those moments in their life that they most regret, or the thing that has popped up in their life they never saw coming, and it doesn't seem to be subsiding. It's the chronic pains of life, not just those instantaneous things that cause us trouble in a week, but the things that don't seem to be going away, our prayers seem to be hitting the ceiling. Everyone in this room has some of those things, but the question is, does anybody know about them? So as you study Paul's transparency, his willingness to let people see right through him, I want you to look at yourself in the mirror and ask yourself the question, am I transparent? Am I a person that people can see as a blend of both weakness and strength? And would you have the courage, as this study goes on, to begin to share with others where you are desperately in need for prayer? James 5:16 is one of my favorite passages, it says, confess your sins one to another, and you will be healed. And I've always said, if there was one place in the Bible where I could insert a couple of words, if God would let me, I would put in, and your struggles. Confess your sin and your struggles one to another, and you'll be healed. Because sometimes the things we share are not sin, but they are struggle. And something happens to us, life feels just a little bit lighter, when we take the things that we've internalized, and we externalize them. And we let other people feel what we feel. We feel less alone, and we feel like we have strength in numbers. I'll say this, um, years ago, I got to go on an African safari. It was an unbelievable trip. We were on a mission trip, and we got to go and stay at safari, and we, we loaded this Jeep, and there were eight of us in the Jeep, and there was no top on the Jeep, and there was a large rifle mounted on the windshield of this Jeep. And as we were getting ready to go out into the jungle, the driver turned and said, one, he said, I have one thing to say to you. Don't ever get out of this vehicle, and do not stand up, as if you are not part of the whole. Because a lion will not come after you, as long as you appear to be with the whole. But when you separate yourself, and identify yourself as an individual, you become prey. And the Bible says that the enemy is like a roaring lion, seeking to devour. And it's when we live and struggle alone, without the help and protection of other brothers and sisters, that we are most susceptible to defeat. Take this study as an opportunity to share with other people where you feel defeated, and where you need help. You will feel the power of the gospel running through the group.
Alright. Now, let's talk about, uh, on page 51. It says, read James 5:16. And this is a scripture that talks about, um, confess your faults one to another. Now, I wondered why it said faults instead of sin, because the Bible uses the word sin a lot, but in this particular case, it uses the word faults. And it occurred to me that, um, it might be kind of destructive to just show up and tell all your sins to, uh, everybody, you know, you have to admit, well, when nobody's looking, I like to smack babies, and then the baby be crying, the mother don't know why, and everybody will think you strange if you tell that, but it does say that, confess your faults one to another, is what the King James Version says, but some of the other versions say confess your sins. So what is the difference between a fault and a sin? A sin is something that, you're doing something that God said, don't do, or you're not doing something that God said to do, is to be, to diso- to intentionally disobey God. A fault- A fault is not always a sin. It would be, I don't know, something is my fault. Like, I come in and I walk past somebody in church, and I didn't say hello. And they get really upset and mad, and says, "She's a bad person. She don't speak to everybody. She thinks she better than everybody else." And I find out about it, if I can find out about it. Sometimes people just stay mad at you for months, right? And you don't even know what you did. I find out about it. It would be my job, as a stronger Christian, to go to that person and say, "You know something? It was my fault. I walked past you. I didn't speak. And I'm sorry that I did that, and I'll try not to do that again." So a lot of times, things can be wrong, things that are our faults. I shouldn't have said what I said, or I should have spoke up and said something. You know, I should have let the office know that I was in the, the hospital, instead of getting mad that they didn't show up at my hospital room, or something. Things that are our fault, because a lot of times, things are our fault. We didn't do it on purpose, and sometimes we did it on purpose, and we should be able to admit. And I think we have a lot of problem admitting it's our fault when somebody else had more faults, and say, "Yes, but they." But which part are we to take care of? Can we take care of what they did? No, we can only take care of what we did. He said, "You know what? This part was my fault." And I think, I, I was very curious as to why the wor-, the, the scripture used "faults" instead of the word "sin", because there's things that are faults that might or might not be a sin, but it's still our fault. And we got to confess those things to each other, even if you say, "I don't think I should have to." Again, with being the stronger Christian, you, you can do it. And you won't die, you won't bleed. If you start bleeding, we'll call nine-one-one. You'll be okay. So if you go over on page fifty, it says, under the red, "Read as two forty-six to forty..." And this is where they all sold their, uh, a lot of possessions and things to support each other. It says, "How did the first church relate to one another? How did the joyful sincerity they each brought to the table impact the community?" So if you're familiar with this verse, of course, we all are, they started selling property to support people who didn't have things. Now, they didn't sell all their property, obviously, because the next verse says that they would have church in each other's house. Now, they couldn't have church in a house that they sold. So apparently, they sold, that'd be like my house, and I, and I have a couch and a TV, and I felt like somebody was needing, I sold my TV, and I sold my, uh, I accidentally have a seventy-inch TV. That's a long story, but let's not get into that. So, and I sold it, and because I found that was a need, so they sold some of their pro-, their property. And it, I think it really points out how much they wanted to help each other, how much they were looking out for each other, that they were willing to sell something that they considered to be valuable, in order to help other people. And now we come down to the paragraph, you come down, two paragraphs, it starts with "name." Name one relational context where it, where it's, what? Yeah, they have too many "its." Where it's difficult for you to personally relate to sincerity. Um, I, I think it's, it's, it's difficult for me to relate to sincerity sometimes. There's things I pray, I talk to God all the time. I'll tell God anything, he knows anyway. But there's just some things I don't want to tell y'all. It's not that I don't like you, I like you, I just don't want to tell you. You ever heard somebody say, "If I tell you, I got to kill you?" You saying, "Well, you know, it might be a few things. If I tell you, I got to kill you. It's not personal, but you gotta go." Cause I can't take the chance you might tell somebody else, but I'll tell God. Now, I think I'm, I'm pretty good at confessing my faults, and something's my fault, I'll say it's my fault. But some things, uh, are sort of really very personal. Now, I think, again, with, all of this happens through who? The Holy Spirit. Who said it? Don't be scared. I'm sorry, paying people five dollars to speak, I'm not, I don't have five dollars to give, but, um, through the Holy Spirit. And I think the Holy Spirit will tell you when it's time to share with people, and what is time to share, and when it's not time to share. I heard the story of these people who took this verse literally, and the woman got up and started telling everybody she was sleeping with, and half the folks was married she was talking about, and they tore up the whole church. It's like, "I don't think you used wisdom, I don't think you prayed before you did that." Because now they don't have a church. So, but then, we're, we can use the, the wisdom of the Holy Spirit. We should never be trying to do anything on our own. I think we don't understand as Christians, dependence is the most important thing you can get right. We're so used to being independent. We want to be big enough to tie our shoes when we're little. We want to be big enough to drive a car. I got it, I can do it by myself. And even, I'm the head of sharing is caring, and I, and I fall into that problem sometime, because Miss, uh, Shirley Krieger, Shirley Collins, and Mabel is in there with me. But then, sometimes I'm going to the store, and she said, "Well, when are we going to the store?" I say, "I'm going to the store Monday," and Shirley Collins would be like, "No, I, I'm, I'm busy Monday. Let's go Friday." Then it's a week later, and I'm like, "We have not been to the store. I could have been to the store ten times and back." And Shirley Collins still tell mine, "Not that day." But anyway, and I can say that she's not here, and I'll deny it if you guys try to tell her. But anyway, sometimes I think I could have just done it myself, you know? I, I'm, I'm in so many situations, especially being single, where I have to do it myself, there's nobody around. I put a bed together, and they said it'd take two people, and I was like, "I don't have two people." So I just had to move around a lot, because I'm gonna have to do it myself. So, I put the thing together. So I fall into that trap sometimes. I'll do it myself. Sometimes I grab books, and some of the meals, like, "Hey, you know, we're men, we're supposed to grab that. Don't be walking around with that." And I'm like, "Okay, take it then." So I was like, "I really could have done that myself." But anyway, so it's, sometimes it's, it's, it's hard to let go of independence, and realize dependence is the best thing we can do. Cause when it comes to the Holy Spirit, I'm a two-year-old there. I'm like, "Jesus, help me with this. Jesus, help me with that." And you know the Bible says to pray about everything? I'm telling you, I pray about everything. I, I get to work, and I'm about to be late, and, and there's no parking spot. Now, I'm the one who left the, the, the house late. It seems like time stops when you're in the shower. And you can take longer, and you're singing, and everything, and then, but time didn't stop. And now you're late, so I'm rushing in, I'm like, "Oh, Jesus, I need a parking spot." And somebody will pull out right in front of me, and I'll say, "Thank you, Jesus." And one time, they were gonna have a, a meeting upstairs, and you can't show up to a meeting late in the army. And there was, I asked Jesus for a parking spot, and Jesus did not cooperate, and I did not get a parking spot. And I was like, "Oh my God, I'm in so much trouble." I said, "Well, Lord, I can't complain, because I'm the one who was late. You didn't make me late." I'm in there fooling around, and I should have stopped fooling around. You know, when God helps you, doesn't mean you can keep doing the same thing. So I go up there, and I, and I, and I get in there, and everybody's standing around looking. I said, "Where is, uh, Major so-and-so?" "Oh, he's late." I was like, "Ooh, thank you, Jesus." See, you can't, atheists are crazy. You can't tell me God ain't real. You can't tell me God, you know, whether it's tough or something little, I'm praying, I pray about toothpaste. I don't know which toothpaste to get. You know, them dentists be in there rubbing all on your teeth, and they wanna pick at stuff. And it's like, I want you to stop, but I want my teeth to be healthy. So I prayed about the toothpaste, and now the, uh, VA gives me free toothpaste with, uh, extra fluoride in it. I don't have to buy toothpaste no more. I, I'm gonna pray about everything. I've had so many blessings, and you don't have to pray about that. So I don't care if I have to pray about it. I get good results, I'm gonna pray about it. Okay? So, when we're together, dependence, we're gonna have to use the Holy Spirit to show us what to share, what not to share, how to share it, when to share it. Don't be reading verses in the Bible, telling me, "I'm gonna do that." Okay, you know something? It's the Holy Spirit that makes it all work. Have you not seen people who try to follow the Bible, who not using the Holy Spirit, and they come up with some foolishness? There's a verse in the Bible about using a looking glass. And that, that somebody's pastor determined that to be eyeglasses, and told his members it was a sin to wear glasses. Joke is out there driving vehicles and stuff, trying to, trying to see, because they think it's a sin to wear glasses. See, this is what'll happen if you try to learn the Word of God, and use the Word of God without the Holy Spirit. Somebody gonna be driving a three-ton car without no glasses on. So it's like, we have to be careful about that sort of thing. And you know what else is going on? We're out of time. I gotta wrap this up. So make sure you do the homework, and, and you'll see it, just do the homework, because we really need to talk about the review. This is like school, this is different from the rest of them. You get taught about something today, you go home and do the homework, just like at school. And we'll talk about some more togetherness. And everybody, please do the homework and be, be ready to talk. I don't know why y'all scared to talk. We, we not gonna charge you. You don't pay ten dollars to talk, just talk. Okay? Thank you. Now, can we please have the, um, the invitation and the offering, please?
Amen. Man, thank you, thank you. We take this time, and, but there's a lot of meat in that being together. Thank you, Christine, for sharing. And, um, and you know, sometimes, we have to do it God's way, as simple as that. Whatever it is, we gotta do it His way. We want things to change, but we got to do it His way. You know, the verse we always quoted, "If my people who are called by My name will humble themselves and pray, and turn from their wicked ways." You know, is "if" is conditional. And accepting the Lord as your personal Savior is conditional. "If we confess our sins, He is faithful and just to forgive us our sins and cleanse us from all unrighteousness." And so many times, we quote, you know, the, the Romans, we call it the Romans' Road. But I, I don't, I'm, I'm gonna read it, because I want you to know that it's in the Word of God. It's just not coming out of our mouth, okay? And it says that, "If thou shall confess with thy mouth the Lord Jesus, and believe in thy heart that God raised him from the dead, thou shall be saved." "For with the heart man believing unto righteousness, and with the mouth confession is made unto salvation." And if you don't know the Lord as your personal Savior, we just take this time and this opportunity to ask you to come. Will you? Jesus does it save. Come to Him just as I am. Standing at the door, and if any man were to hear My voice, open the door. I will come to Him and suffer with Him, and He with me. Revelations three twenty. Amen. Praise God. Thank you for the lesson. And as we prepare for our, our Litany for Paying the Tides, the, uh, the athletic, uh, was it Saturday, that's been postponed, right? Okay, it's been postponed, because, from Saturday, so just be mindful, be mindful of that. Any, anything else? Let's stand for our Litany there. It's time to give. It's tithing and giving time. To whom does the tithe belong? Who should tithe? Why should we tithe? How much should we tithe? What is God's promise to the tithe? For you are to bless them, that should not be wrong enough to receive. What kind of giver does the Lord love? Amen. Father God, we, we thank you, Lord, again, for, for your word, for this Bible study. And Lord, we just thank you for this opportunity to give back to you just a portion of what you've blessed us with. And Father, we pray that these gifts, tithes, and offers be used to build your kingdom. In the mighty and powerful name of Jesus, we pray, amen. Now unto him who's able to keep you from falling, and to present you faultless before the presence of his glory with exceeding joy, to the only wise God, our Savior, be glory, majesty, dominion, and power, now and ever. Let us say it. Amen.